This conference will now be recorded.
Item four, consent agenda. Before we proceed with the consent agenda, item 4C needs to be removed and considered individually. And Councilmember Spiegel needs to recuse himself from that vote. So the consent agenda with item 4C removed. A motion?
Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda. Go ahead, Brian.
Okay, Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda with the removal of item C.
Force, yes.
4C, excuse me.
Second, Obie Greenleaf.
There is a motion by Councilmember Hender and a second by Councilmember Greenleaf. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed, same sign? The motion carries. Item 4C, receive a report, hold a discussion and take action to appoint Jared Johnson, Chris McKinney, and Kelly Spiegel to the Community Advisory Committee for the Smith Foundation with four, five, and six-year initial terms respectively. Mr. Rex.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. As you're aware, the lawsuit between the Bank of America and the Smith Foundation has been settled. What comes out of that settlement includes a community advisory committee to be made up of five members of the community representing the health, education, town/chamber, church-religious, and social services sector. Three of those positions are to be appointed by the city council to include the health, town/chamber, and church-religious sector. And two of those positions are to be appointed by the Dennison ISD Board of Trustees representing the education and social services sectors. We have placed on the agenda for your consideration nominating Jared Johnson to a four-year term representing the health sector, Chris McKinney representing the town/chamber sector for a five-year initial term, and then Kelly Spiegel from the church-religious sector for a six-year initial term. The documents lay out that those initial terms will be staggered. However, after that, they will be five-year terms for each of the members. The Dennison ISD Board of Trustees will consider their appointments to the board, or sorry, to the Community Advisory Commission/Committee tomorrow night at their board meeting. And staff recommends approving the three city-appointed positions. And I can take any questions you might have.
Questions for Mr. Rex? Discussion? A motion?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the three members, Kelly Spiegel, Jared Johnson, Chris McKinney, to the Community Advisory Committee for the terms respectively as specified.
Second, Obie Greenleaf.
There is a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Adams and a second by Councilmember Greenleaf. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Thank you. Item 5A, receive a report, hold a discussion, and take action on a resolution adopting TCAP's professional services agreement and Genexa's Genera- Energy's commercial electric service agreement. Mr. Lawson.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So part of the reason that I am presenting this today is there is a dearth of information. I will try to pare it down quickly and then let you all answer questions. To begin, you guys are members of the Texas Coalition for Affordable Power, TCAP, and that's how most cities procure their energy. It's kind of force and numbers type thinking. You guys have done some stuff for encore steering committees, for atmos steering committees, and that's kind of the same thinking. It's just a different utility. And so the current model that you all procure your energy is a fixed price, generally kind of a long-term contract. It's a five-year, it'll end in two years. And as you see on the screen, it's a fixed price for a megawatt hour. And so TCAP came up, well, they've been working on this for about a year now. And they've come up with something they're calling the Strategic Hedging Program. And if we go to the next slide, basically what they are trying to do here is, one, just shorter contracts in general. These are two years. But two, kind of hedge against the fluctuation in the market that invariably happens. And I have some slides for you in just a second to show you that fluctuation. But basically, in a nutshell, what you would be doing with this program is, instead of setting the rate after 2022, and we have that for five years, what we would do is, we would engage in monthly auctions based on an average price from, I mean, hundreds of providers. Jexa is the one who gets us into the marketplace, and TCAP actually procures it for us. But as far as who serves us, and Judd can jump in anytime he wants to here, there is hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of them. And so, and so that's kind of the thinking with this program is that if, is that we can often, and you'll see here in a second, we can often very much undercut the market by engaging in these auctions. And what these auctions will do is actually let us procure two years out. Because, well, again, your contract will run for another two years. And so what this does for TCAP, and then for the member cities like Dennison, is it allows them to purchase energy, but at a lower rate usually, but also more energy at that lower rate. And so that's kind of the key here. And on to the next slide, I'll kind of show you where we're at as far as the market goes. So these blue lines here, the first one's 2011. So this is the range that cities procured energy in 2011. We're talking all the way up above $160 a megawatt hour, all the way down to around $30. That red line is the average. And that, across the graph, the red line is the average. You can see that the average is about, is about stable, but the fluctuation in the markets are pretty incredible. That's a wide, wide range. And so what we're thinking with this hedging program is that you will be able to hit that average a lot more often. And I'll show you that on the next slide. So here's kind of where TCAP has looked at on ERCOT pricing. ERCOT is kind of the deregulated model now for Texas. So 2019, you can sort of see, see how, well, we're locked in before then. But then as we start getting into where bigger groups like TCAP are about to start buying energy again in 2023, we start going up on this graph again. And there's a number of reasons for that. One of them is simply because so many cities are locked into a five-year fixed rate that the market is just going to drive up higher come 2023. That's just how it works. On the other hand, carrying costs mean that cities are going to pay more simply because they procured higher. And so what the hedging program allows is for us, in these green checked areas, in these lower end of the spectrum areas, allows us to procure more energy at lower prices and hopefully over the term, come in well under what your fixed rates term would have been. And so on to my next slide. All right, so this is what TCAP did, and this is really the meat of it right here. They did a look back over the last, this year, and then the last two years. That green line is what all cities are locked into. They just are. That's what you're paying. The red line, the red graphs with this program would have realized quite a bit of savings, and especially last year, it would have. And I'll just peek at that a little bit too, real quick. Just for grins, I looked at where the market is at today on ERCOT. I mean, I saw, I saw 19 cent megawatt hours, I saw even, even 18 cents, some in the 20s, which again is well under what the market rate, what we're paying is right now. But we're locked into that rate until the end of our term. And so again, what the strategic hedging program would allow us to do is, come January, we would be able to average all of those costs and then buy our energy for 2023. And again, I mean, as of right now, that would have been a tremendous amount of savings for cities in general. And then one last thing I wanted to point out too, is that even with this program, we have the option, the city of Dennison and TCAP has the option to simply, if this thing isn't going well, I don't know, two years from now, we have the option to lock into a fixed rate like we've done in the past. That will always be in an option. Wholesale providers will always want to wholesale provide energy to the market. And that would be a simple resolution, we'd be right back to where we were. So if any hesitations were about the program itself, we'd be able to lock in back to some rate, whatever that rate might be. So generally, that's my presentation. As I said, I think, I think cities will realize pretty good savings with this program. And frankly, TCAP is, is, they're meant to, meant to get us savings. So any questions? Anything from Judd?
Mayor, if I can just add a little tidbit. City of Dennison buys a lot of electricity, takes a lot of juice to run a water and wastewater treatment plants, pump stations, just all our facilities. So this, this has benefited us a lot in the past. When we, when we went to the current contract, if you recall, we, we cut our cost in, pretty much about in half, if I remember right. And we actually used that, that savings to go towards our street improvement program. So it, you know, I don't know that we're going to save that much this go-around, but it's, it's still going to be significant. And I appreciate John helping us through this process.
Questions from Council? Discussion? A motion?
Mayor, I move to approve the resolution adopting TCAP's professional services agreement and Jexa Energy's commercial electric service agreement for power to be provided on or after January 1st, 2023.
Second.
The second was from Councilmember Hender?
Spiegel.
Spiegel?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay. There is a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Adams and a second by Councilmember Spiegel. All those in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Same sign? The motion carries. Thank you, John. Item 5B, receive a report, hold a discussion, and take action on a resolution providing relief to the citizens of Dennison from certain fees as determined by the city manager. Mr. Rex?
Thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers. If you can go to the next slide, Chris. So as we kind of get into the COVID-19 pandemic, and obviously, one of the biggest impacts from this is, is going to be on financial and economic side of things. Certainly, it's going to impact a lot of individuals and families. So as a staff, we really sat down and tried to figure out how we can help some of our utility customers in particular through this, through this pandemic. And just locally, one of the, one of the numbers to share, just to see what the impact is here locally in Grayson County, 38, over 3,800 unemployment claims have been filed in the county since March 1st, 2020. Sounds like a lot, but to put it in context, and this, these are numbers from the census, there are about 73,000 adults aged 18 to 65 in Grayson County. And so 3,800 of those represents about 5.3% of our working population has filed for unemployment since March 1st. That's significant. I know that there's Dennison residents included in that number. And again, so we want to do what we can to help, help folks through this difficult financial time. So the proposed resolution provides us some flexibility to work with residents in several different ways, primarily on their utility bills, which we can offer extensions and kind of waive fees if possible. Really, what we want to encourage folks to do is to reach out to the city if they're going to have trouble paying their water and sewer bill, water, sewer, trash bill, call us early on so that we can work with them and, and set up payment plans and provide other relief. The other thing specifically that we want to do is, as long as Waterloo Pool is closed down and we're not incurring any operating costs there, we want to credit, this will be after the fact, after we open back up and can figure out exactly how long we were closed, credit back the $5 monthly Waterloo Pool fee to residents. Again, it's, it's a little bit, but it will help, help out in a little bit of a way there. So there may be other opportunities as well. I know we've worked with some of our citizens who have rented facilities or had plans to use a park pavilion and put a deposit down. We've been as flexible as we can with folks during this time, just knowing that a lot of people are going through challenging financial times. And while we want to continue to fund the city and make sure that we can deliver the services, there's also plenty of opportunity for us to work with, with residents on their ability to pay. So that's really the, the bulk of the resolution is pretty simple. It just kind of gives me, a city manager, and by extension, our staff, some opportunities to be flexible, working with residents on their ability to pay. So we recommend approval. Be happy to respond to any questions you might have.
Hey, Judd, how are we, how are we getting this information out to the, to the public?
When it's approved, we will add it to our COVID-19 page so that folks have it there. We'll also kind of notify our, our kind of frontline staff in utility billing so that they, they know that they've got some flexibility to work with people there. If you think of any other ways we can spread the message, definitely let us know.
Okay. And as far as the pool goes, I mean, I know we're not incurring any cost, employee cost, I don't guess, but, I mean, I have a pool, I have to maintain it, I have to maintain it year-round so it works properly, but I want to use it, so.
Yeah.
I'd say we do have some costs there.
We do. We're still treating the water and kind of keeping it circulating, that sort of thing, minimal costs. The, it's going to be about $25,000 a month that we'll credit back. And so it's, you know, it's not a little bit of money, it's significant. But we feel confident it's, it's a good gesture back to our residents who are in good.
Any further questions for Mr. Rex? Discussion? A motion?
Mayor, I move to approve the resolution providing relief to the citizens of Dennison from certain fees as determined by the city manager.
Second.
There is a motion by Councilmember Hender and a second by Mayor Pro Tim Adams. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Item 5C, receive a report, hold a discussion, and take action on ordinance authorizing the issuance and sale of City of Dennison Combination Tax and Limited Surplus Revenue Certificates of Obligation Series 2028, levying an annual ad valorem tax and providing for the security for and payment of said certificate, providing an effective date and enacting other provisions relating to the subject. Ms. Wagner?
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. This evening, you do have before you two different ordinances. And these are, the first one we're going to talk about has to do with improvement projects and equipment that was approved by council during the fiscal year 2020 budget process, specifically for this request, West End Fire Station and the ladder truck. Back in September of 2019, we did a reimbursing resolution that was passed by council. On February 18th of this year, we approved a resolution for publication of notice of intent. And then we did publish a notice in the newspaper and on the website. Our request tonight to council is to pass the ordinance or approve the ordinance authorizing this issuance of certificates for the West End Fire Station and the ladder truck. Funding at this time will be issued in an amount not to exceed 2.5 million for both cost issuance and these improvements. Pricing took place on April 17th and was made available to us today. The final pricing was made available today. And I'm going to kick this over to Marty Schu. She is with Hilltop Securities, and she's going to talk specifically about these bid results for this certificates of obligation.
Good evening, Mayor. Marty Schu with Hilltop Securities. We represent the city as your financial advisor. These bonds were sold through a private placement. And what that means is essentially various banks were invited to submit an interest rate proposal to act as the sole purchaser of your bonds. There's been a lot of volatility in the market these days, understandably so, but I'm pleased to see that you had some really great rates. And here are all the bids you received from four different banks. Chase Bank came in with your lowest proposed true interest cost on these COs. We have highlighted, they actually offered two options based on the prepayment availability of the bonds. The 1.36% that they proposed did not have a prepayment option. So we are recommending that you go with the 1.46%, which is their next best, lowest rate, that does afford you a prepayment option to give you the most flexibility over time. And below that, we've included your repayment structure. So essentially, you would see what that 1.46% translates to in dollars over the life of the debt. It's an excellent rate. By adopting and approving the ordinance before you tonight, you are effectively locking this interest rate into place and accepting these terms. And you will receive the money on May 20th. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Questions from council? Discussion? A motion?
Mayor, I move to approve the ordinance authorizing issuance and sale of City of Dennison Combination Tax and Limited Surplus Revenue Certificates of Obligation Series 2028, levying an annual ad valorem tax and providing for the security for and payment of said certificates, providing an effective date and enacting other provisions relating to the subject.
There is a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Adams and a second by Councilmember Greenleaf. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? The motion carries. Thank you so much, Renee. Item 5D, receive a report, hold a discussion, and take action on an ordinance authorizing the issuance and sale of City of Dennison General Obligation Refunding Bonds Series 2020 to refund outstanding obligations issued for various public improvements and to pay cost of issuance, levying an annual ad valorem tax and providing for the security for and payment of said bond, providing an effective date and enacting other provisions relating to the subject. Ms. Wagner?
Good evening again, Mayor and Council. The original bonds for this were issued in 2010 as a Series 2010 bonds. We have an opportunity to refinance these bonds for significant savings. Request from council by staff to approve a resolution for publication of notices issued February 18th of 2020. Notice was published in two separate occasions and on our website. We're requesting tonight that council authorize the issuance of these refunding bonds this evening. And once again, I'm going to have Marty speak to the savings. We received our final numbers today, and I'm going to let Marty give you the good news on that as well.
Good evening, Marty Schu with Hilltop Securities again. Before you are the good results that we received, these bonds were also sold again through private placement, just like the certificates of obligation. Various banks were invited to submit a proposal to act as the sole purchaser. And yet again, Chase Bank came in as your lowest provider. They provided again two interest rate proposals based on the prepayment options. In this case, we are recommending that you select the lowest interest rate. It's a 1.3%. This does not have a prepayment option, but it allows you to maximize your savings. This is a little bit of a shorter issue than that, one year shorter than your certificates of obligation. And because you have taken the, or selected the option with a prepayment option on your certificates of obligation, it makes sense from our perspective for you to just maximize your savings on the refunding. So that 1.3%, again, excellent low rate, actually translates into total dollar savings of $494,458 over the life of the issue. That translates to average annual debt service savings of just about $55,000 per year, or a net present value savings of 11.43%. And just to give you an idea, we don't typically start recommending refunding proposals until they make a minimum 3% PB threshold. So as you can see, you're well above that with the 11%. Again, by adopting and approving the ordinance before you tonight, you are locking this rate into place, and the funds will be delivered for this refunding on May 20th as well. I'm happy to answer any additional questions.
Questions from council? Discussion? A motion?
Mayor, I move to approve the ordinance authorizing the issuance and sale of the City of Dennison General Obligation Refunding Bonds Series 2020 to refund outstanding obligations issued for various public improvements and to pay cost of issuance, levying an annual ad valorem tax and providing for the security for and payment of said bonds, providing an effective date and enacting other provisions relating to the subject.
Was, was that Councilmember Hender?
Spiegel.
Spiegel.
There is a motion by Mayor Pro Tim Adams and a second by Councilmember Spiegel. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? The motion carries. Well, Renee and Marty, those, those rates couldn't come at a better time, so thank you very much. Item 6A, receive updates from staff regarding the automated trash collection program. Ms. Jones?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. It's hard to believe that it's only been a year since we started the automated trash collection program, since we've been talking about it for almost three years now. Just a quick recap of the process that got us to that, to that rollout of the program on April 1st, 2019. We started talking about it as staff and council in 2017 and really went more in-depth in the spring of 2018 at the, at the budget workshop. Out of that budget workshop, we created a subcommittee with council members and with staff members that discussed the differences on what, what options we had moving forward. In January of 2019, we purchased the, the three new automated trash trucks, along with all of the carts that outfitted the city with, to begin this program. Along that, along that way, we talked several times about different, different ways we could implement this. At one point, we talked about only rolling it out to a partial portion of the city. And then we decided just, we might as well just pull the Band-Aid off and get it all done at once. And so we began to have those public meetings in February of 2019. We held five public meetings and sent out a countless number of brochures and literature and any way we could push out information, we tried to make sure the information got out to the residents. And then in March, we began delivering those carts. And we rolled out the program beginning on, on April 1st. So along the way, we ran into, you know, some hiccups. We had to remain flexible. We had to remain flexible on how we moved forward with the program. But now that we are a year in, we can look back and see where we, where we started, some of the positive, positive outcomes that came from this program. And two of the, the really major program or program outcomes that we had were previously with our manual collection, we had three trash trucks driving to the landfill five days a week. It's a 50 mile round trip for our trash trucks to get to and from the landfill. And we have been able to reduce that to three trips per week per truck. So overall, we're saving about 15,000 miles a year, which saves on fuel and wear and tear on the vehicles. In addition to the safety of not having any laborers riding on the back of those trash trucks, we also have the addition of cameras to the trucks. Each, each of these new automated trash trucks are outfitted with six cameras. They watch every angle of the vehicle and they watch the driver. So in the incident of an accident, we have all of the cameras that we would need to make sure that we did not violate any safety precautions. And we are able to automatically get some notifications from the company monitors or cameras that if one of our drivers is speeding or has a hard break or a hard acceleration, we do get notifications and we coach those employees on, on some of those safety issues that we, that come across on those cameras. So one of the major areas that we changed along with this residential automated trash collection program was how we did bulk and brush. And this is where we saw most of the hiccups moving forward. We, we changed, we had the one time a year bulk pickup in April. And we changed that to six months out of the year, people are allowed to put out up to two cubic yards. And, which was a pretty big change compared to what we had, an unlimited amount throughout the month of April. And so that was a, a large learning curve, one for staff on how we were going to internally complete those routes. And then also for residents to learn the new rules. Who knew, who knew what two cubic yards were before you really had to pay attention to it? And so we allowed for a three month grace period right after the beginning of this program and to allow residents to get used to the, to the limitations that we had on the program and to also allow staff to work out some hiccups. As the year rolled on, we continued to have a few problems with bulk and brush pickup. We got a lot of residents calling saying, I got a bill in the mail and I didn't know this was coming. And so we created a special pickup or forced pickup committee with internal staff comprised from code compliance, sanitation and utility billing. And we met several times and talked about ways we could help eliminate some of those issues. So we started placing door hangers for those homeowners who had placed either more than the two cubic yards out or if they had placed something out outside of their scheduled time for bulk or brush pickup. So that way they were given the information that allowed them to know that, okay, yeah, that wasn't, that was more than two cubic yards. I'll make sure to watch that next time. But they knew they were getting a bill in the mail. This has reduced our adjustments that we've had to do after the fact, after a bill has gone out. We also have outfitted all of our drivers with digital cameras so they can take pictures when they write on those door hangers, how much they picked up and when they picked it up. So we have everything we need that, so if a homeowner calls and asks questions, our staff is able to quickly answer those questions. Also, in December of 2019, council approved an amendment to the fee schedule. One of the things that came out of that committee was that we really want to encourage people to call and ask us for a special pickup rather than just sending it out and waiting for code compliance or, or our sanitation division to drive by and pick something up. Originally, everybody was paying $30 per cubic yard for a forced pickup. And so we really wanted to incentivize that. We dropped that down to $15 per cubic yard for those who called ahead before we actually picked it up. And so that was another adjustment that we made. And so we, we were trying to remain as flexible as possible as we move forward. We looked into complaints from residents and we, we talk all the time amongst ourselves about ways we could improve service when it comes to sanitation. So we are working on some additional changes to the residential collections, the residential collection station so we can help streamline some of that process. So be on the lookout for some potential changes there. But those are the, the major outcomes that we've seen from this program over the last year. And I'd be happy to answer any questions regarding how things are going or answer any, any comments that you have.
Questions for Ms. Jones? This, thank you, Carrie. This is, this has been great for our city. So I know that you've lived and breathed this for several years now. So it's, it's, it's great that we're to the point where we're talking about the successes. So this was an information item only, so there's no action needed by the council. Item 6B, receive updates from staff on pending capital projects and funding sources, revenues, anticipated bond issuances and other financial and operational considerations that will impact the fiscal year 2020 and fiscal year 2021 budgets. Mr. Rex?
Thank you, Mayor and council. You'll see this agenda item on here probably for the next few council meetings as I want to make sure we keep you updated on the financial and operational impacts that are the result of COVID-19 pandemic. So this, not a lot's changed on our staffing plan and operationally, although we are in the, in the, basically in the process now of planning to transition back to heavier staff presence locally onsite and then also adjusting some alternate work schedules and different things in accordance with the guidance that we're getting at the federal level and at the state level as well. Our services continue to be provided and, and our facilities are close to the public, but we're still available. We have a lot of resources online and you can always pick up the phone and call City Hall for, for help as well. Next slide, please. So as you recall, last week, the president came out with a plan to reopen America. And one of the criteria for kind of ramping back up and reopening was the percent of positive tests as a, or sorry, positive tests as a percent of total tests in the community. So I'm just show kind of what that looks like in Grayson County. This is something that we've been tracking since the pandemic started here locally. Really, we kind of reached our peak on April 2nd and based, it's been going downhill since there, downhill in a good way. As far as the number of positive tests as a percent of total tests. And so as a staff, we have started kind of moving into phase one of facility reopening plans. The image on the right is just the, what each division or department director is filling out and, and completing for their facilities in their division. Looking at possible start dates for each of those phases. Phase one, today, April 20th. Phase two, Monday, May 2nd, May 4th. And phase three, Monday, May 18th. Now I will say that these are preliminary dates and, and could change based on what conditions are like here locally with, with COVID-19. Phase one, there's not a lot of change from, from a staffing standpoint, although we have brought onsite some of the workers that were working remotely and are transitioning them back over the next couple of weeks. So we expect that Governor Abbott's going to share more details with us a week from today in terms of what reopening looks like statewide, not just for businesses, but for county, local governments, city governments as well. Next slide, please. Financial impacts of COVID-19 really have what have been the focus of our efforts over the last couple of weeks. You recall that I shared some details about revenue shortages that we were expecting as a result of the, the financial impacts. So the, really the only significant change since the last council meeting has been our, our sales tax projection. And what you see here is generally a kind of a more industry specific analysis of our sales tax revenue. And so while we were projecting about a $650,000 shortfall, we're looking now more at about $900,000. And again, I promised these numbers will change because these are our best, our best estimates and best forecasts that, that primarily me and our finance director Renee have put together based on specific industries and what you see might happen with those industries over the next five months. And so you see the average decrease in that right hand column. That's the average over the next five months. Obviously, the last month has been a heavier percentage decrease. And, and as things ramp back up and as people return to business and return to commerce, buying things, going out to eat, that sort of thing, that the numbers get better as the months go out. So this is just kind of an average over the next five months for the rest of the fiscal year. From a timeline standpoint, really the, the next time we'll report back on, on what the rest of fiscal 2020 looks like is May 18th. What we're doing now is reviewing all of the projections for the, the end of this fiscal year as far as expenses go, along with budget projections for next year. Towards the end of the month, the Grayson Central Appraisal District will be releasing their preliminary property values. So we anxiously await those numbers more for next fiscal year 21, 2021 than for now. But it will sort of help us kind of further the discussion along in terms of what expenses we need to look at and that sort of thing. Our next sales tax report comes out May 8th and this will be the first one that has a partial month of shutdown included in it. So this will be March's sales tax revenues. You know, we were basically shut down for half of March. And so it'll be really anxiously await those, that next report to come out. And then after we kind of take all that data into consideration, we'll report back on the May 18th council meeting with some updated projections for the rest of the fiscal year, along with any recommendations if, if such are needed at the time. Next slide, please. I mentioned at the last meeting about cities that thrive during downturns or recessions, position themselves well to take advantage of low bond rates and a favorable bid environment. And I thought it would be helpful in, in the context of the two bond issuances that were approved tonight, just to show what kind, what kind of savings, when you're talking about interest rates, what kind of savings that would equate to perhaps for the rest of the bonds that we were planning to issue this year. So 26.4 million is the, the remaining bonds that would be issued or that were planned to be issued for this year. And that's for our street program, for the water and sewer capital improvement program and for the downtown project. So if you look at, you know, maybe the difference between 2 and 3% for that overall, over the life of the, of the debt, you're talking about a difference of about $3 million. And that's a, that's a lot of money. This is for a 20-year, 20-year issuance. So again, I want to position the city in such a way that, that as long as we have the revenue to support it, that we can take advantage of low bond rates and what may pan out to be a favorable bid environment if our construction industry is kind of hungry for work. So again, just wanted to keep, keep that in front of you so we can keep thinking about how we can put a bid from, from our surroundings despite the economic difficulty that is, that is around us. And I, is there one more slide, Chris? Or is that it?
That's it.
That's it, okay. So that's, that's it. Really just wanted to update you on what things were, were looking like for City of Denison here and some of the impacts. Again, I'll continue to keep you guys updated and, and look forward to moving ahead. And I can answer any questions you might have.
Questions for Mr. Rex? This was an information only item, so no action is required by the council. Thank you so much, Judd.
Thank you.
There is no need for an executive session this evening. Again, I want to thank Scoutmaster McMillan and Boy Scout Troop 403 for joining us on this very unusual city council meeting. You'll have to come back and join us when we're, when we're all there in person. So there being no further business to come before this body. The time is 6:50 and we stand adjourned.